Good evening and welcome to the October Planning Board meeting for the city of New Rochelle. For those who may be new to our proceedings, there'll be two portions to our meeting. The first will be the public hearing portion of our meeting. During that time, I will call the applicants, the items that are listed on the agenda. The applicant will come up to the podium and present their item. Members of the planning board will ask questions and after that, we will have the opportunity for members of the public to speak and make public comments. After the public comment period, we will invite the applicant back to the podium and ask them to address the public comments and then the board will make its determination. So with that, we're going to ask Max to please take roll call.
Sarah Dobbs Brown.
Here.
Jim Brown.
Here.
Walter Lepo.
Here.
Kate Mercado.
Here.
And Mary Smith.
Here.
From staff, we have Corporation Counsel, Chief of Staff Kathleen Gill, Deputy Commissioner, Building Official Paul Vaca, Adam Salgado, our Deputy Commissioner is in the crowd, Kevin Kane, Director of Planning and Sustainability is to my left, Jorge Ventura, Senior Real Estate Development Manager is also in the crowd, and myself, Max Schwartz, Planner, Board Clerk.
Paul, the first application, item 2.1, Application PB 18-20 by 75 White Oak Associates for special permit approval to construct a telecommunications facility at 75 White Oak Street, Block 1556, Lot 91, in an RMF-1.3 residential multifamily zone district.
Good evening Chair Dobbs Brown, members of the board. My name is Leonard Cohen. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Cuddy &amp; Fader, 445 Hamilton Avenue, White Plains, New York, on behalf of New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, also known as AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T is proposing to construct a telecommunications facility on the rooftop of the building at 75 White Oak Street in the city. The facility consists of three sectors of antennas. There are four antennas at each sector for a total of 12 antennas. The antennas are located at the edge of the building so as to face out in various directions in order to increase and stabilize AT&amp;T's capacity and coverage issues within their network. There's also a generator, a backup generator, in case a power outage is proposed, that is on an equipment pad that's also located on the roof of the building. Back in August, myself and an AT&amp;T engineer went and met with the fire inspector and the planner at the site and we walked the rooftop. There were comments received at that meeting, the building inspector was also there as well. There were comments received at that meeting chiefly to move the equipment cabinet where it was currently located out of the way of a fire escape. We submitted revised drawings last month. The equipment pad has been moved and there are no comments from building or from fire regarding the revised design. I'd also like to note that earlier today, the planner was kind enough to forward letters from neighbors and there were some opposition to the project. So I think, before I touch on that, does anybody on the board have any questions about the facility specifically? Bring up an elevation view.
Can you just walk through the plans and just indicate where you're proposing to have?
Sure, sure. Yep, so here's the rooftop view.
You can point using the mouse on the screen, it'll show up on the monitor.
Oh, okay. Okay, so here's a rooftop view of the building. This is one antenna sector here, one antenna sector here, and the third here. Here's the equipment pad. It's elevated on a steel grate above the actual roof. There's the backup generator and the equipment cabinets with AT&amp;T's equipment inside. This here is utilities that are run. There's a stepover tray. These are run into the building. This is a sort of a zoom-in of the equipment cabinets and facility. And this is an elevation view. AT&amp;T did look into the feasibility of flush mounting these antennas on the face of the building. Unfortunately, that was not able to be done really because of height. So if you were to lower the antennas and flush mount them onto the face of the building, you'd be blocking your signal and you wouldn't be able to achieve the remedy and the coverage and the network that we're achieving with the antennas proposed as is.
What would be the benefit of flush mounting?
Well, you may be able, if you flush mount them, you know, I think we try, whenever feasible, to conceal the antennas from view. So if the building is a brick building and you can flush mount them onto the face of the building, it allows you to paint the antennas sort of a rust color and they blend a little bit better. But we did submit as part of the initial application photo renderings of the facility. And I think, you know, in my view, those renderings show that there really is no significant impact visually from the antennas as proposed where they currently are now.
They'll be sitting behind a parapet?
They're located just behind the parapet, but you know, flush up against the face of the, flush against the inside of the parapet, correct.
And so how much do they extend above the parapet?
The roof of the building, just zoom in here. The top of the parapet is, I'm sorry. These heights are on here, so.
Yeah.
The top of the parapet is roughly 70 feet. The top of the antennas is 75, roughly 76 feet. The antennas are four-foot antennas. And that, you can see there's an existing bulkhead that's on the building, so the antennas don't extend much further than where the bulkhead is.
So it's about five and a half, five or six feet above the top of the parapet?
That's right. And again, that height is needed. This is not really a very tall building to begin with. That height is needed to really achieve the coverage objectives that AT&amp;T is trying to achieve with this application.
Can you talk a little bit about how you assess coverage?
Sure. So we submitted as part of our initial special permit application, that's Exhibit E, sorry, Exhibit D, Radio Frequency Design Report. So what will be done is AT&amp;T's engineers, their RF engineers, will evaluate using maps what areas of a community there are gaps in coverage. So the particular gaps that were identified in this part of New Rochelle, and this is all in the report, are in-building coverage, meaning the service that you have inside of a building, and also capacity. And capacity is downloading videos and watching movies on your phone and sending large files. You know, I think there's not, it's clear to me, at least from, and I'm not an RF engineer, but from the report, that there isn't necessarily a gap in being able to make a phone call. But there is a significant gap in that data capacity and in the in-building coverage in that area.
Okay, so you're assessing across the different types of use?
Sure. And it's, AT&amp;T looks at their entire network capacity. So it's not just voice, it's data, voice, it's, there's several components that they use to evaluate whether or not their service is where they want it to be. So that was Exhibit D of the submission, and I think if we can, Exhibit E was a SiteSafe RF Compliance Report, and I think this will transition over to some of the comments that we received today.
Uh huh.
AT&amp;T, so a licensed engineer in New York State signed and sealed this report. The report does an analysis of these antennas at maximum output. And it found, it found that even at a maximum output, the RF emissions, the MPE that is produced as a result of these antennas is well below, well below the threshold set by the FCC and the federal government. So.
Excuse me, excuse me. Members of the public will have the opportunity to comment after the applicant is finished. Thank you.
So, and I would just remind the board again respectfully that once the applicant demonstrates that their proposal is within the federal guidelines, you know, a further discussion is preempted regarding health and safety. We've demonstrated that. Also, I think my understanding of the way the procedure is with the city, the city actually hires their own independent consultant that reviews the application prior to the issuance of a building permit. Max, is it Cityscape?
Yes.
Right, so Cityscape, which is RF, they review telecommunications applications. They'll come in, they'll do a review of the application on the city's behalf. That's something that the applicant has submitted an escrow, and will submit an additional escrow for, in order to pay for that review.
So Max, maybe it'd be helpful if you could walk through the process that the city undertakes in reviewing the work of the applicant?
Sure. So that, that work with Cityscape begins after special permit approval, in which case, as the applicant is looking to apply for a building permit, Cityscape reviews the structure to make sure, to ensure that everything is within FCC compliance. If not, the applicant is required to remedy those and keep funds within the city in escrow to pay for the consulting fees. It's a long process and takes place over many months after special permit approval. And just to be clear, the applicant has already set up said escrow account and is ready to go at that, you know, if granted approval.
So they're overseeing the implementation to ensure that it comports with the plans and the safety requirements the state?
Yes. And if it does not, they will not receive a building permit?
So the building permit process happens at the end of the installation? When, what's the timing on, what's the sequencing of how that works? Special permit approval's here, so that gives them permission to get started and then?
No. We, no permission to get started after the, no, we don't have permission to get started on construction until a building permit's issued.
So.
Yeah, so the sequencing is if special permit is granted, then construction drawings are completely developed, they're reviewed for compliance, building code compliance, and after we receive the vendor's insurance, then we go ahead and issue a building permit. Subsequent to that, they file an electrical permit for all the electrical portion of the project, and then we go out and conduct inspections, fire, building, electrical, and RF. Review the RF frequencies when we get the reports.
So the city's consultant, Cityscape, is involved in that construction drawing portion of the process? I'm trying to understand where they come in.
They're more involved in the radio frequency portion of it, not really the building code compliance. We do that in-house.
So that's got to be completed before you'll issue your building permit?
Yeah, they have to give us 80, 80% of the coverage area has to come back to the city. And upon completion, they have to give us an RF report that proves that they're in compliance with 33199, which is our code, which is.
And with federal regulations.
Yeah.
Right, Chair, that essentially means as-built. So once the facility is built, we actually have to go out, do a reading, and make sure that what we're proposing today is what's being built and that what's being built is emitting, you know, the same MPE that's what's in these reports and it's under the threshold.
Uh huh. Yep, that's what I was trying to get to. Thank you.
One more note if I may. So the RF safety report notes that there are three things that need to be done to make the facility safer, if you will. So those are, because it's a rooftop and there's access to the rooftop, somebody can actually go up there, they require signage to be placed, alert signage to be placed on all of the sectors. And there's one area where you theoretically could walk in front of the antennas. Prolonged exposure in front of the antennas is not recommended, so they have a, they recommend like a rope, sort of blocking you from access to be able to get in front of the antennas. So those are the additional safety measures that will be proposed as part of the construction drawings.
Are there any questions or comments from other members of the board on this application? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to open up this application to comment for members of the public. Is there anyone here from the public who'd like to comment on this application? Just please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Annette Zamberg, 69 Candlewood Road. Okay, so he's giving me his time, okay? So I have more time. My name, dear, good evening. My name is Annette Zamberg, a longtime resident of New Rochelle with a family of three children. I'm speaking for SafeTech New Rochelle, which opposes Singular application for 12 antennas on 75 White Oak Street. This is a direct quote from the zoning laws section 331-99C, as quoted by Singular in its memorandum in support of this application. Quote, "As the discretion of the board, any false or misleading statement in the application may subject the applicant to denial of application without further consideration or opportunity for correction." End of quote. Singular has made the following statement in its memorandum in support of its application that are materially false and misleading. One, Singular's statement that there is, quote, "public need for applicant service," end of quote, on page two is misleading. Public need is not determined by whether the FCC has granted a license, but whether there is an actual gap in cellphone coverage. I conducted approximately 57 tests for cellphone coverage within a 2,000-foot radius of 75 White Oak Street and within the building of 75 White Oak Street. There were no dropped calls and the audio was clear. Therefore, there is no gap in cellphone coverage. The videotape evidence of no gap in cellphone coverage is being submitted along with testimony at the URL, I'll give you these papers. Two, this is also reject the RF engineer's misleading statement on page 11 on its report in the application, that there is a gap in reliable in-building service in New Rochelle. The statement fails to focus on 75 White Oak Street, which is the subject of this application. The RF engineer does not even conclude that there is a need, only that there, quote, "may be dropped calls," end of quote, where my drive test and my in-building test have conclusively shown no dropped calls. In fact, we are submitting our evidence to the FCC to create a federal controversy over its, this application. When there is no need for additional capacity for cellphone service, there is no right to install wireless facilities under the Telecommunication Act. The Second Circuit Court of Appeals has clearly ruled on this issue. Three, Singular's statement that the intended effective radiated power is approximately 60 watts is misleading and false. The RF engineer failed to state the actual maximum effective radiated power of all 12 antennas and fails to support its statement that they comply with federal emission standards of health and safety limits. What Singular fails to tell you is that all 12 antennas have the capacity to produce an outrageous 400,000 watts of effective radiated power, ERF. This is far exceed the FCC limit of 1,000 ERP. Four, Singular further misleads this board by stating that it is exempt from environmental assessment under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEQA, and self-identified as type 2 under New York State law. There is no exemption for wireless antenna under type 2, under type 2, type 2 under SEQA. In fact, a federal court ruled in the city of Ryan, New York, that under federal law, the city did not have to decide on an application before the completion of environmental review under SEQA. The city attorney has provided a positive declaration of environmental impact. The outrageous 400,000 ERF that far exceed the FCC limit of 1,000 ERP mandates a positive declaration of environmental impact by the city attorney for New Rochelle and classifying this antenna as type 1. Therefore, based on zoning code and on Singular clearly false and misleading statement, the application should, quote, "subject to the applicant to denial of the application without further consideration or opportunity for correction." End of quote. The application must denied with prejudice. Thank you. I sent this, you should all have a copy so you can look into the details, and I'm submitting affidavit of, you'll see the details of the test that we did. We did the test three times. First time, we went more than 2,000 radius around the building. Second time, we did it within the building. Third time, we repeated all these calls and this time, we even turned off all the possible antennas on our phone, the wifi, the GPS, the data. All the phones went through perfectly. There was no one drop in calls.
Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you very much for your comments. Are there other members of the public who'd like to speak? Come on down.
Good evening. My name is Cisco Reese. I'm a resident of 51 White Oak, longtime for 10 years. I just wanted to touch upon something that the gentleman from the applicant's attorney said. He had said that prolonged exposure in front of the antenna is not recommended. He himself stood here and said that. Who gets to draw the line as to where the effective barrier is or distances from these antennas? New Rochelle High School is right across the street. It's a densely populated area where the kids walk. Every child from New Rochelle is potentially going to go to that high school if that's, you know, the route that their parents choose. It's just super densely populated to put up a telecommunications antenna facility, whatever they'd like to label it as. I had AT&amp;T for several years. When I moved into the building, there is no lapsing coverage. That statement is patently false. The videos worked, we downloaded. It appears that AT&amp;T is just trying to increase their footprint with 5G and the 5G rollout. As a former Sprint Nextel employee who was intimately involved with the rollout of 4G many years ago, the EMF output of 5Gs is significantly higher and there isn't enough evidence, there is no, there isn't, there aren't enough case studies to say that it's safe or that it isn't safe, and I think that's the crux of the matter here. The proximity of these antennas to the high school is dangerous and there are so many people densely populated in that area, seniors, people with myself, who have numerous metal implants in my hands from a car accident. It just seems patently unsafe and I hope that you all would take that into consideration, coupled with the fact that the owner of 75 White Oak is, doesn't really take care of the property, doesn't landscape, doesn't clean, doesn't blow the leaves in the front, doesn't take care of his driveway. It seems like an egregious money grab on both parties, on the part of both parties to install this. And that's it, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you ma'am, thank you. Next speaker.
Thanks, sir. Ma'am, do you have that card? Thank you very much.
Cisco, you forgot the playground across the street where children will go for four years at least every day.
Ma'am, do you mind just stating your name?
My name is Aisha Cook. I've lived at, I've lived for 19 years at 51 White Oak Street and in New Rochelle for over 30 years. I'm speaking in opposition to the application by New Singular Wireless LLC for the placement of 12 AT&amp;T microwave antennas at 75 White Oak Street. New Rochelle's wireless ordinance clearly states that the city also recognizes that it has an obligation to promote public safety and to promote the health, welfare, and safety of the city's residents. I oppose the application for these antennas and so do the 106 tenants on White Oak Street who have signed the petition. SafeTech New Rochelle has proven there is no need for these antennas. The Telecommunications Act of 1996 only regulates cellphone coverage if there is a gap in coverage. SafeTech New Rochelle did a driving test within a 2,000-foot radius around the geographic area of the building located at 75 White Oak Street. Numerous calls were also made within the building, the audio was clear. We did a service test in all our 57, no, sorry, and in all our 57 calls, there were no dropped calls. We have the live videotape to prove it. There is no gap in coverage, therefore, no federal, there is no federal preemption. There is no right to install these antennas, period. SafeTech New Rochelle is in the process of filing a controversy with the FCC to contest this application based on the fact that there is no gap in coverage and therefore no need for additional wireless facilities. The 12 antennas spread all over the rooftop, as shown with their gain, could power up to an outrageous 401,700 watts of effective radiated power. This far exceeds by 4 million times what is required for cellphone coverage, which is typically only 0.1 watts for a cellphone call. That is overkill in a matter of public safety. We have clear evidence that much lower levels even cause harm. You must study this further before you make a decision tonight. We're calling you to meet with our engineer experts who can elaborate further. This high level of effective radiated power requires extra environmental assessment under the National Environmental Policy Act. It also requires environmental assessment under New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRA. There is no exemption for wireless antennas under SECRA. The FCC guidelines for emissions do not provide sufficient guidance because they are based on 30-minute exposure limits for the public, not continuous exposure 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year, as contemplated by Singular's antennas. The New Rochelle Planning Board has the jurisdiction, power, and obligation to promote the health, welfare, and safety of the city's residents. Therefore, the Singular application to 75 White Oak Street must be rejected. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker.
Evening ladies and gentlemen. Name's Christopher Bermudez, resident 75 White Oak Street. Been living there for the past few years, my wife's been living there for about 11, 12 years. We live there with our one-and-a-half-year-old son. And simply put, your decision today regarding the deployment of wireless radiation emitting antennas at 75 White Oak Street will affect my life, my neighbor's life, and the lives of every child in the city, including my child. Thousands of scientific studies have found direct and immediate biological harm from pulse-modulated wireless radiation, including neurological damage, memory impairment, sleep disturbances, headaches, ringing in the ears, fatigue, dizziness, seizures, cardiac arrhythmia, and permanent genetic damage. According to the International Agency for Research on Cancer, the IARC, children absorb up to 10 times more radiation than adults due to their thinner skulls and higher brain conductivity. Our brain? Our brain is electric. Our heart is electric. Our nervous systems, electric. And our cells communicate electrically. The question is not how it can affect us, but how could it not affect us? Please do not let the captured Federal Communications Commission fool you, which, by the way, has not updated its wireless radiation exposure guidelines for the general public in nearly 25 years. Please do not let the telecom industry fool you, an industry that, as Dr. Joel Moskowitz of UC Berkeley said, "is using the tobacco industry playbook to further their corporate Sorry.
Take your time.
Our group has proven that within a 2,000-foot radius of 75 White Oak Street, cellphone calls can be made. This means there is no gap in wireless coverage, and thus, the planning committee can deny these wireless antenna applications. Lastly, COVID-19 has left our economy in shambles, and our residents cannot endure additional financial stress. Placing powerful radiation emitting antennas near our homes could result in major property devaluations for up to 20%, as was discussed in a recent article published by the National Realtors Association. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, to touch base on one more thing, one more thing, lastly. He said that, the gentleman said that there's gonna be ropes. You can put up a rope around the antenna. So what will block, just consider this, what will actually block the radiation from you if there's only a rope separating you from radiation?
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker.
My name is Andrew Manganielli. I'm a resident of 51 White Oak Street, first 18 years of my life and as recently as the past five years or so. Tonight, I would like to present on behalf of my father, Richard Manganielli. I have a durable power of attorney, and I would like to read his statement. "These are requests under the U.S. Americans with Disabilities and Fair Housing Act Amendment that you act by any and all emergency means to cease the placement, construction, modification, and operations of all microwave antennas to be deployed at 75 White Oak. As a resident of New Rochelle with advanced non-small cell lung cancer, a major struggle to endure for over seven years, it has substantially impaired my major life functions as well as my overall strength and stamina. I cannot be exposed to any more microwave radiation as it exacerbates those functions. I do not wish to, nor should I be forced to, nor does federal law allow that I endure my home and community even more unwanted actively harmful exposure to an agent scientifically proven to impair neurological, respiratory, and other functioning. The applied-for microwave antennas cannot lawfully be placed on our densely populated block as they are harmful to all, but particularly to those more susceptible, including myself. While making ADA and FHAA requests for myself, I am aware that my family and others need freedom from this radiation as well. If these antennas operate, I will be unable to protect myself even in my own home. Your intervention is key, but also based on the Communications Act's purpose to promote the safety of life and property. The widespread deployment of denser radiation would cause me and many others more harm and disability. By operating antennas whose wattage can be stealthily turned up at any time near everyone's home and deluding bodies, sidewalks, and neighborhoods with even more debilitating and directed radiation, everyone will be harmed. People with disabilities who are especially vulnerable to this unnatural radiation cannot participate in society, much less maintain their own sanctuary home. Under the ADA and FHAA request, you stop these microwave antennas from being placed. While I make great strides to adjust my living conditions to cope with my own illness, the deployment of the antennas would harm me beyond repair. It clearly infringes upon my rights as a disabled person to protect myself within my own home, not to mention obligations to safeguard my family and society. Thank you, members of the board, for listening, and I hope and look forward to learning your intention with this request. Thank you."
Thank you very much for your comment. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Ruth Moss. I do not live in New Rochelle. I live in your neighbor, White Plains, but I have a very long history in New Rochelle. I'm here this evening as a citizen of Westchester and director of a group of hundreds of others who are trying to keep New Rochelle and all Westchester residents safe in their own homes, on their neighborhood streets, and in their schools. The 12 antennas, which are mini cell towers that are up for approval tonight, should have been stopped right at the beginning when the first New Rochelle Code Enforcement officer viewed the application documents. Keep in mind that the FCC does not regulate its own telecommunications act. It doesn't require registration, doesn't test exposure levels, and doesn't require the wireless industry to test them either. You, the city of New Rochelle, are your residents' first and only line of defense against the adverse impacts of irradiating cell antennas in your jurisdiction. Where is your Department of Code Enforcement in all of this? If I were adding a room to my home, or a railing, or a fence, we know how strict you would be. Where are you now when the very health of our community is at stake? Antennas are installed not by telecoms, but by agents known as site developers. These companies, like New Singular, seek to maximize profit, which means building as many towers as possible as cheaply as possible. Adverse impacts on the community are not factored into their business plan. As such, they routinely practice deception on city applications, claiming they are FCC compliant when in fact they are not. Quoting incorrect standards that allow them to spike the power by 500%, undercalculating the estimated power of the antenna by applying a false minimum distance factor, who's checking on that? Powering up once the antenna is installed, using canned data to prove necessity for the service, and not completing the federally mandated NEPA review, which is environmental. Cities fall for it, sometimes turning applications into permits within one week. I'm very happy tonight to hear about Cityscape. As we continue our public awareness campaign in New Rochelle, more and more residents will hear what you're hearing tonight. And if you allow these towers without strict code enforcement, they will not be happy. They will know that you knew and did nothing about the fact that these 400,000-watt towers completely overkill are unnecessary, are pointed at people's windows, and are being installed alongside evidence we are placing in the record that this degree of power will make people sick. When an applicant is not FCC compliant, health is very much on the legal table. You must immediately deny these applications until your Department of Public Works and Code Enforcement is trained to accurately review every measurement, map, and standard of an incoming application, just as you would do for my woodrail fence. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Brogmas. I live at 75 White Oak Street. I've been there for 11 years. My husband, who lives there, has been there 53 years. Recently, he's 57 years old, and recently, he got kidney failure in January of 2019. He's had eight operations since then. He's also had a leg amputation in January of 2020, so he's home most of the day. And I have a lot of friends who live at 75 White Oak Street, who live right below where these towers are supposed to be. I'm sorry I'm getting choked up, but, I mean, we're talking about life and limb during a pandemic? Seriously? That's all I want to say. I rest my case. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker.
Thank you very much. Ma'am, are you speaking for several?
I'm speaking for both of them and myself.
Okay, so you're gonna be doing the speaking?
Correct. Well, I'm sorry, I was like, yes. They don't speak English at all, so I'm gonna actually be translating.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. I actually have two affidavits on behalf of Ruth Perez, and we have Sessa Perez, which actually resides at 75 White Oak Street. I have the affidavits here, which I will submit after I finish speaking to everyone. Thank you, guys, for giving us an opportunity to speak against the Singular antenna. I live underneath, I mean, my apartment is underneath the roof. And I'm gonna tell you that that roof is not even stable. I've been living there 17 years, and in 17 years, that roof has collapsed four times. The last time, the whole ceiling collapsed, that I thought it was gonna fall on top of me. Okay, thank God I wasn't sitting there, because guess what? I work from home. And by the way, I'm an attorney. What Counselor mentioned, which is really misleading, is false. He mentioned that there's a gap. Guess what? I do examinations before trial every day from my apartment. I do it through Zoom. I do conferences with judges every day. There's never any gap. I forward documents to judges, stipulations of settlements, discovery, complete files, 300, 500 pages, no gap at all. It goes through. Guess what? I don't have internet. I have Wi-Fi. I don't even have the connection. I use my brother's Wi-Fi. And yet, he comes in front of you guys, he says, "There's a gap. There's no gap." I'm the proof. I work every day. I do depositions every day. I talk to judges every day. I talk to other lawyers every day. My conferences are all through Zoom. I've been working from home because I also have an autoimmune illness, okay? I have MS. So it's difficult for me. I suffer from headaches. One of you gave me a call a week ago, and I appreciate it, when I forwarded my affidavit. I was suffering from migraines, and I could barely speak. I had to cancel the depositions because I could not speak. I avoid computers a lot. So even when I'm in Zoom, I'm far away from the computer. Because why? It's all magnetic, electromagnetic waves. Again, the gap, and then the ceiling collapsing, which I want you guys to keep in mind, we're looking at 12 antennas. I'm gonna be underneath those antennas, okay? Do you know that I can't sleep ever since I read that notice? I can't sleep. It's hard for me to move. Okay, where would I move? That's my place. I've been living there for 17 years. It's gonna be 18 years in that apartment, four times that ceiling collapsed again. And they wanna put, he even mentioned, by the way, Counselor mentioned, that he has to put some type of rope tape because of radiation, just in case somebody walked next to it. I'm underneath that radiation. My apartment is underneath. I'm gonna get 400, how much is it actually? 400 millions watts of radiation. You guys wanna kill me? You might as well just put a gun on my head. That's what they're asking. It's all about money. A few cents, that's what the law was looking at, okay? Do you know the weight of that antenna? He just mentioned, he mentioned the weight. No, that ceiling is gonna collapse on top of me. Either the radiation is gonna kill me, or the ceiling is gonna collapse. Then you have these two individuals, they're my neighbors. She had cancer. She's still receiving treatment. She's a survivor of cancer. Again, kill her, just put that gun on top of her. He has high blood pressure. We know the electromagnetic, they're cancerous, there's tumors, there's studies that have been done. By the way, I did some research, some research. Forty countries in Europe are not allowing 5G. It's prohibited. They're not, Switzerland, okay? Switzerland took it away. They put it near the school. They had to take it away because some of the children developed cancer. They were not sure whether it was the 5G or what was it, but they removed it. You could research it, it's all over the articles. It's there in front of you, okay? If you wanna research something like that. He, like I mentioned, this is two couples, the ill, the autoimmune illness is at stake. My autoimmune illness is at stake, okay? I can't sleep. This has been a nightmare for me. What else the Counselor said that is actually misleading? The school, he mentioned the school. Guess what? He, it says here that in his application on page nine, he might know whether the project is located within 15 feet of the school, hospital, nursing home, and the like. His answer was no. I didn't see the application, but I would love to see it. Did he sign that? Was that a swarm statement? Because that's perjury, okay? That is perjury right there. The school, guess what? It's 250 feet from the children's playground. I could see from my window the children playing in front of me because I live in front of the little park. I could see the children playing there from my window, okay? That's 250 feet. Then you're talking about the children's library. I see the children's every day, I've been living there for 17 years, 17 years. I walk the same street. I know my neighborhood. How many feet is that actually? That's 1,200. Then you have the high school, the high school's actually 1,200, 550 feet is actually the children's library. 800 feet, there's a daycare center. Actually, it says one, it's actually two daycare centers. Guys, this is within your power, okay? I know you don't reside there. This is not going on top of your house. It's going on top of our home and the surrounding area because it's gonna affect everyone, not only us, but you guys. So think about us, think about the people living there that we cannot just move out. And then in this pandemic, you have to do more research on this and help us out. Just remember, 40 countries have not allowed it, and it's your job. This is why we elect you, to protect us, because who else is gonna do it? This is all about money, and money has to stop. Our lives is number one, the life of people and the children who are the future. That's what matters. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Are there other speakers on this application?
I am a New Rochelle resident and a high school history teacher. The history of laws pertaining to the application--
Ma'am, could you just give your name and address?
I'm sorry. I'm Beatrice Gugliamo, and I'm 49 Woodbury Street in New Rochelle. The history of laws pertaining to the application for wireless facility across the street from the New Rochelle High School is of primary relevance. The Federal Communications Act of 1934 was purposed to promote the safety of life and Every New York State official's primary duty is to the public safety and property. Thus, no disagreement exists about the founding national laws demanding above all the protection of public safety and property values and the denial of the applied-for AT&amp;T wireless facilities. FCC rules, beginning in the 1930 and continuing thereafter, requiring that the antennas wattage be minimized to that which is needed, such that their radiation would not cause interference with, whether with another electronic device or a human brain. However, the proposed ERP, effective radiated power of the applied-for antennas, is grossly excessive and not needed at all, and this radiation certainly interferes with electron flow in human brain and cells. Furthermore, this ERP would broadcast radiation upon very sensitive areas, not only in the apartment building, but also the high school, where my daughter has taken swimming lessons for five years, the playground where she has played since early childhood, and the children's library, all right across the street. I hereby allow my daughter, Sophia, to speak her position. I hereby allow my daughter Sophia to speak her position.
Thank you. My name is Sophia. I love people and want everyone to be safe and protected. I've taken swimming lessons at the high school and used the playground and the children's library since I was three years old. These are across the streets from where AT&amp;T wants to place microwave antennas. If these antennas operate, no children will be able to use the high school, the playgrounds, or the library without being irradiated. I want to be safe and healthy, and I want my family and friends to be safe and healthy as well. You must deny this application.
I'm just gonna end with this. It is a fact that FCC does not claim its radiation guidelines to be protective of public safety. Therefore, this falls to the local government. And the U.S. Congress Conference specifically requires localities to regulate residential sensitive areas more strictly than commercial areas. I submit those statements herewith. In conclusion, you must by law deny this application as of excessive ERP, as without need, and as in proximity to residences and children's study and play areas. We have expressed no matter of concern, but solely matters of substance, of fact and law. My daughter and I accept your oath of office to protect the safety of life and property. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker.
Good evening. Dear city officials and dear all--
Can you just say your name and address?
Yes, I'm Daniela Valvi from 23 Candlewood Road. I would like to start by attesting and affirming that the following statements are true, accurate, and within my personal knowledge. I'm a physician and environmental epidemiologist with over 10 years of experience on the health effects of environmental exposures. I'm Assistant Professor of Environmental Medicine and Public Health at ICANN School of Medicine at Mount Sinai, and I'm also a new New Rochelle resident. In my view, your primary purpose under your oath is to protect the public safety, in this case, by denying this application. The extraordinary number of antennas and excessively high wattage upon an apartment building near other such buildings are positively hazardous. Today, we have compelling evidence from both animal and epidemiology studies showing that microwave radiation from infrastructures affects cellular and organ functions and can lead to many chronic diseases, including neurological problems, high blood pressure, adverse pregnancy and reproductive outcomes, as well as certain types of cancer, especially brain tumors. Per the best evidence-based science we have to date, kindly note two problems. The first one is that highly synoviotic pulse-modulated microwave radiation is harmful. Effects of this radiation are seen at exposure levels well below the FCC guidelines. No exposure level can be considered as safe because factors other than intensity, for example, the duration, can also influence health outcomes. It is definitely unrealistic to suppose that the radiation of these 12 antennas on the roof of a building will not impair the health of the residents in that building, the neighbors, and the broader population that lives, studies, works, and plays in close proximity. The second major problem is that children and adolescents and persons with chronic illnesses are more vulnerable. Microwave radiation is more detrimental for highest-susceptible subgroups. This includes children and adolescents whose skulls, immune systems, and organs are not yet developed to protect them against the synoviotics. Numerous studies have linked exposure to microwave radiation to neurodevelopmental effects in children, such as ADHD and autism. This indicates that the worst possible seating for these antennas and other wireless infrastructures is in high-density residential areas with children and persons with pre-existing conditions, near schools, playgrounds, and here, a children's library. Based on my review of evidence-based data and well-designed studies, I must urge you to deny this application. This is no mere matter of concern. The hazards the antennas would otherwise impose upon apartment dwellers, the children at the library and high school, and the broader community are intolerable. As confirmed by the U.S. Congress's Conference Report on Section 704 and the very purpose of the Telecommunications Act, matters of safety cannot be print. They rather must be promoted. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Are there other speakers who would like to comment on this application? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna close the period of public comment and ask the applicant to come back to the podium and address the public comments.
Thank you. So we certainly appreciate those comments. I think I'd like to address just a few items. First of all, with respect to the structural integrity of the building rooftop. A structural analysis was performed by an engineer who went out to the site, visited the roof, did an inspection. A full structural analysis was submitted in connection with this application, which concluded that the roof was structurally sound enough to be able to support the facility, including the equipment center, which is also located on the roof. The city zoning code actually has a list of, a priority list of where new facilities should be placed. The reason that this facility is placed on an existing building is because the city has a preference of avoiding having to construct a new tower. So there's a priority list here, and the fourth highest priority is on existing buildings without existing wireless telecommunications facilities in industrial, commercial, mixed-use, college-related, and residentially zoned districts. We submitted, together with our application, an affidavit, oh, sorry, an analysis which was performed by the site acquisition engineer who goes around and takes a look at available sites. We were not able to locate another site in the vicinity that was able to address AT&amp;T's gap in their coverage network. With respect to the comment about the rope. So as I mentioned, that is an additional safety measure which is proposed. And what that does is, because it's a building rooftop and you theoretically could have access to it, what that's doing is saying if the antennas are facing out this way, away from the building, it puts a rope here that says, "Don't walk in front and stand directly in front of the antennas." But that doesn't mean if you're standing behind them that you're, you know, that you need a rope that tells you to stay further away. Also, I think that the analysis that was submitted, the SiteSafe RF Compliance Report. I can't speak to the 400,000 number that was discussed, but that analysis is actually done with the antennas that they're cranked up to the highest. So it's saying, this is the worst-case possible scenario. And what the report found, which was done by a licensed engineer who specializes in telecommunications, found that even when you look at the maximum radiation put to the absolute highest, it was well, well below the threshold that the FCC has set for permissible human exposure.
Excuse me?
And again, I just think that, you know, the city has several sort of safeguards from the board approving the project tonight, which is first, there's a Cityscape independent review. And then you have your building department, which is going to do a full construction drawing, structural analysis, electrical, all that stuff before a permit is ever issued. And as I mentioned before, in order to get a certificate of occupancy, we have to come back out and do the testing to make sure that the facility as built is within the appropriate range that the FCC sets for emissions. Thank you.
So I heard a few other comments that maybe we can go through and you can respond to. So let's just go back to the output, the testing. And you're talking about the testing being done when the antennas are at their maximum.
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit about how you arrive at the number of 12 antennas? And how that assessment was done in terms of achieving the desired coverage? And why that number?
So I think, I think there's maybe two separate questions there. The number of antennas and the question of the gap in AT&amp;T's network is separate and apart from the emissions, the radiation emissions that are, as a result of the antennas. So first, with respect to the gap in the network. So that, let me just get to the report so I can. So it's, as I mentioned, it's Exhibit D in the submissions titled "Radio Frequency Design Report." And an RF engineer is actually gonna, once a need is identified, an RF engineer will go, visit the site, and perform a number of tests. And those tests determine whether or not there's a gap in the network. So the other, the other thing that's important to keep in mind with respect to that is it's not just this specific area. Right? So you may have other facilities around 75 White Oak Street that are also at capacity. What this site does, it enables those sites to have access bandwidth. So now those other sites can offload, and they're not so stressed. Those sites are all within the city of New Rochelle. None of those are outside of the city. So we're not doing this to help other communities. This is, we have capacity issues all around this area, and we have an in-building coverage gap directly in this area. And both of those, both of those items were documented in the RF report that was submitted. Now, with respect to 12 antennas, 12 antennas, again, I'm not an RF engineer, but I can tell you that 12 antennas most likely is just the standard number of antennas that are used to be able to achieve the remedying the coverage gap that they want to achieve.
And can you talk a little bit about the directional orientation of the antennas? So you talked about the rope to prevent people from standing in front. How will they be oriented from the top of the building?
Sure. While he brings, while he brings this up, I just wanna, in terms of the number, I would say probably all of the rooftop installations that this board has approved around the city. There's a couple actually on Carlton Road, just north of the high school, that has three separate carriers on top of its roof. And I believe they're nearly all either nine or 12 panels per--
For installation.
There's typically three sectors on every cellphone installation for rooftop. There's an alpha, a beta, and a gamma sector. They face different directions so they can get signals triangulated from other cell sites. This is a typical installation. This type of installation exists on, I don't know, at least 25 or 30 buildings throughout the city of New Rochelle and every other community in Westchester County. We only have two monopole antennas in the entire city. They're both located in the north end of New Rochelle. One is located on Wilmont Road, and that is owned by the state of New York. That's their property. So we have absolutely no jurisdiction or say on what they do on that state land. No, it actually is correct. And the other one is located on Weaver Street, behind one of the shopping centers. Those are the two monopole antennas that exist in the city of New Rochelle.
Thank you. I'm sorry, the public comment period has ended.
So--
Excuse me.
Chair, to address your question. I believe the, so you would have, here's the bulkhead, the stair access point for the rooftop. So, you know, the theory is if somebody comes out onto the roof, there will be alert signage here, warning signs that say, "Don't, don't approach these. Don't approach these." And then this area, as you can, you can see, there's a little space where theoretically an individual could stand. So there will be a rope proposed, or sometimes they use a chain too, just with a sign on it that just says, "No, no access." You know, "Do not, do not cross this point."
And, but the orientation of the antennas, so they're not pointed down. Is that correct?
They're, they're facing out.
And so--
Out across the parapet of the building.
And so for somebody who lives in the living space underneath that portion of the roof--
That's correct. The, the signal is gonna be, it would make no sense to propagate the signal down into pavement or into a building. You wanna propagate the signal out so that you're able to achieve the coverage objectives that AT&amp;T is trying to achieve.
And is there a proposal to put any kind of footing or something underneath the antennas from a structural standpoint as part of the installation?
Just, just real quick, in addition to the rope, I apologize if you addressed this earlier, but is there also signage?
Yes.
I know sometimes there's signage around the installation, but also signage at the door of the stairwell at the roof of the building?
That's proposed as well, yeah.
Thank you.
And I don't have the landlord here, but I know when I visited the site in August, we had to get advanced authorization to get up to the rooftop. It's a locked door. It's not like anybody can just go up there. It was locked. So I'd like to bring up the engineer who worked on the drawings just to answer that specific question because there, there are brackets in the foundation that support the antennas, but he can--
Great.
Be better--
Thank you.
My name is Ali Shaheed. I'm a registered structural engineer in the state of New York. And to answer your question, there are two kinds of supports for each one of these sectors. One of the things that you'll see is that they are kind of buttered up against the parapet. So there is a connection for the three-inch poles that actually support the antennas. They're connected directly into the parapet. And, and then you will see these diagonals that come down. That is like a belts and suspenders kind of a thing. But most of the load is going into your parapet. For that particular case, in the lower right-hand corner, there is some load that is being imparted into, onto the roof. But based on our analysis, that load is within code stipulated criteria. And it is controlled by a code which is ASE 7, which is American Society of Civil Engineers, Publication 7, 2016. And the loads that are being used are basically the wind load and the ice load that you'll see in addition to the dead weight of the structure itself. So based on that, I don't think there is any concern for the roof to be impacted adversely by these antennas. Whatever else goes on, I guess, is not within our scope. But based on our survey and based on the analysis, we consider this roof to be safe. And while I'm at it, I may indicate that there is a platform, an equipment platform that is there, which is being supported, again, onto the parapet and also down onto an existing load-bearing wall that is there right underneath it. So all that load path is taken care of. And if you look at the report, it kind of addresses each case separately, and reaches a conclusion that it is safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's another question about the proximity to a school. Can you, can you just talk a little bit about whether facilities like playground, library, other, those types of facilities were taken into account when you--
Yes.
--did that assessment?
They were, because it's required by code. And so-- And so you can actually, if I zoom in on this page of the drawings here, you'll see there are, there are several notations to, there's this line here, which lists the distance from the facility to St. Joseph's Nursing Home. That's one portion of, that's one type of property that the, the code specifically calls out, that's 757 feet to St. Joseph's Nursing Home.
I'm sorry, ma'am, you've interrupted repeatedly. Please be respectful.
Sorry. I know there are, yeah, so up here, we have New Rochelle High School. It's over 1,000 feet to New Rochelle High School. Our, our engineer's analysis of a radius, a 500-foot radius did not detect any other schools or, or nursing homes or things like that that were in the 500-foot radius from the facility.
And so were playgrounds considered as part of that?
Let me just double-check the code to see if playgrounds are, are included in the code section.
Or public library.
I, I just don't have them memorized.
Okay. Just taking a note.
Mr. Vaca, do you happen to know what, what code section that is? Do you remember?
331-99.
It's the subsection, yeah.
Maybe in, in the meantime, there is another comment about the city responsibility for enforcement, and I guess my question is, can, can we just talk a little bit about the scope of what Cityscape does? I'm assuming that that's our, that's the city's max, that's-
Yes.
-the city's monitoring and enforcement vehicle?
Cityscape, I think, is fantastic. They, you know, they review the radio frequency reports that we're not qualified to analyze on our own. So we go through them and they analyze these things, spit back reports, and it, it's a fantastic way for us to validate exactly what is and what is not FCC compliance, and if it's not, how the applicant can remedy that. They're, they're very detailed in their reports and-
But these, these sites are also monitored on an ongoing basis. They're, they're required to update and, and check in with the city to ensure that they're still in compliance with all the applicable regulations. So as long as any, any telecommunications facilities in existence and operation in the city, they are required to maintain an escrow, so that review will, will be funded. We guarantee that that will be funded, and that, that happens through the lifespan of, of any installation.
So that, that Cityscape, that, that's an ongoing monitoring and enforcement that happens, not just at the application, the time of application?
Absolutely. It's with the applicant, with our consultant, and our Bureau of Building staff, who, despite some comments made earlier, does an excellent job to ensure safety for all of our residents.
I'm sorry, Chair, I'm not, I'm not finding that specific section, but I, I have to remind the board that once, under federal law, once the applicant has demonstrated that the facility complies with the applicable health and emission standards, the issue of health and safety is, is precluded from discussion.
Right, so we're talking about that compliance though, right? That's the question.
Right, so, so we have, we have, by submission of the SiteSafe RF compliance report-
Mm-hmm.
-demonstrated that the emissions, even if you assume the maximum output, are well withhold, below the threshold. So whether or not it's-
I'm sorry, ma'am.
And then, and, 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 and just for everybody's not, everybody's knowledge, what happens after that? Go ahead, continue, please. Continue, so the public actually knows what happens.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not-
You, you, you made a comment that once, federal law requires that once you submit that document-
Right.
-and it shows compliance-
Right.
-that the city's obligated to do what?
Well, the city is obligated to not entertain or, or further discussion regarding health and safety if that, if that-
This is right, the city is preempted at that point-
The city is preempted.
-from considering those health issues.
Correct, and then what, and then what happens? Then what happens? If this board chooses to deny this application, what happens after that? Go ahead, you can say it.
Well, I understand what you're saying. I think, you know, I, we hope not to get to that point. There is, as a public utility, there's a long line of federal law that would, would challenge a decision to deny the application. It would likely, you know, that decision would likely be overturned in, in federal court, but I, I don't want to get into that, really.
Thank you.
And so, I'm sorry-
No, I, I think that-
I'm still talking. Okay. So there was, there were other, the applicant on this is 75 White Oak Street, correct? It's the landlord is the official applicant, is that correct?
The applicant is, is AT&amp;T, New Singular Wyos PCS LLC. The property owner is 75 White Oak Associates.
So AT&amp;T's before us today or 75 White Oak Associates?
Well, both, as the property owner is allowing AT&amp;T to take this action. So we have, we have the owner listed on the agenda, but he, he's correct, the applicant, the appellant is AT&amp;T.
Okay, solely?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from members of the board? Yeah?
Well, I've been on the board for-
Your mic's not on.
He knows, thanks. I've been on the board for more than 20 years, had the privilege and the honor to serve here. I think at least twice a year, an application such as this appears before us, and there's very little knowledge of what our role can be and what it can't be. It's been suggested here, and I'd just like to repeat it. It's a public utility. Federal law has set up guidelines, and as the attorneys describe, we can't discuss health because all that is not in our purview. All we can do as a planning board, which may not, you may not be aware of that, is determine the proper construction, the safety of access to these, these towers, but that's about all. If they, with our consultants who look at this and show that they are within the compliance and they don't exceed the amount of radiation that the federal government has set up as the norm, we can't deny it. Otherwise, they'll go to the courts and get their way. So I feel very bad for this young girl who came here. I see my granddaughter, when I see, was listening to her. I see a person who rehearsed a beautiful speech. She's an activist at an early age, and she, if we either deny it, which, or approve it, she will think her voice caused us to think a certain way. We can't listen to her voice as long as they comply with the federal guidelines. So you're looking to us to do something that we have no right to do, and that's sad, because every single person who has come before us and I listened to in the 20 years has had the same concern about cancer, about health, about just being taken advantage of. It's like a repeat of the same old, same old story, and I feel so bad for you, because you've organized this thing. You've made plans to come here, you've given up your evening to come here, and you're seeking justice. We can only deliver what we're capable of doing, which is construction compliability. The FCC has tied our hands, and we all can say, hopefully, 20, 30 years from now, they were right in terms of it not being a health hazard. So please, no matter how you feel we're going to rule, I applaud you for your activism, but we can only do so much. And maybe if you knew that before you came here, you wouldn't be so excited about maybe doing something about your concerns. And you're gonna feel if we appear not to have taken your word for certain things and will rule in favor, that we don't see you and hear you or care about you. But we all are New Rochelle residents. I've been here since 1969. I've raised a family, I've raised grandchildren up here, and we're still here, and we still love this place, but we have limitations here. So I just want you to understand what we can do and what we can't do, and I applaud you for being activist. I, I, excuse me.
Ma'am, can you sit down, please? Ma'am, please sit down. Please.
Public comment is, is finished, thank you.
Sir, the public comment section is closed, everyone. The public comment section is closed. If everyone could please remain quiet for the main-
So, so part, so, so part, part of the, the important, part of the information that we've been trying to convey to you tonight has been what, what is the city's role in overseeing and monitoring these types of facilities and applications? And that's been the conversation about Cityscape, about the consultant that the city has hired in order to assist it in overseeing the, and monitoring these facilities. That's, and so that's part of the dialogue that we've been having. Dr. Lipow is exactly right in terms of the scope of our, of our responsibility here. I did, I did, I did-
Excuse me, we do not like to ask people to leave the meeting, but if you cannot remain quiet, we will have to do so.
So I have an answer to that? And the, the setback for installations on the rooftop is for, from nursing homes and private and public elementary and secondary schools. That's, I'll give you the section. It's 331-99 subsection J. Well, I have it on my phone. You know, the, the public comment is over, okay? So right now, we are addressing one by one all of the comments that were received. It's not, it's not a debate at this point.
It's, it's not, it's not a threat-
It's not a threat, it's a reality.
It's a statement of fact.
It's a reality.
Statement of fact. Are there, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, ma'am, ma'am, I'm so sorry, but the public comment period is closed, and you had an opportunity to come up and, and issue your statement. We also received many statements in writing in advance of this meeting, which we have reviewed, and thank you very much for the interest and for doing that. It's been very helpful. I also heard concerns about the maintenance of this property. I heard complaints about the condition of the roof. We talked about the structural integrity of the roof. I wish the applicant on this application was the landlord at 75 White Oak Associates, because maybe we could have a condition that the landlord also meet with residents to discuss some of these maintenance issues, but you're telling me that the applicant is not the landlord. So we are listening to you, we are hearing your concerns, and where we have the right, we are considering the type of actions and conditions we can include. But there, there is a federal standard, and to the extent that they're complying with that federal standard, our hands, our, our hand is limited. Are there other questions or comments from members on the board on this application? Good. Okay. Max, would you like to go through the conditions of approval?
Sure, we, these are standard conditions of approval for special permit telecom applications. I can read through them all if you like for the record. The applicant has been briefed on them and is, is okay with them, but I can read through them if you like, just for the public to hear.
I actually had a question.
Please.
There is a, there, there is a, there is a condition number seven that talks about the, the building department, and this is, the, I think this references Cityscape, this is the right to use the city's telecom consultant to confirm placement. Is that a reference to Cityscape?
That, that language is already in the city code, it's just included here as part, you know, it would be included as part of the resolution just for, you know, just, just to note it.
Okay, 'cause the only thing I was looking for in here was, this talks about the, the certificate of occupancy and completion, but I didn't see a specific reference to compliance with the federal, state, and city safety guidelines. Is that, is that somewhere in here, or how do we, how do we get to that point once you've, once we've approved? Is there no condition that the applicant has to comply with those standards?
We could certainly add that language.
I would like to add that into that condition number seven. Is that acceptable to the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, and then Max, if you could just highlight the different conditions, I think that'd be helpful.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I couldn't-
Can you highlight the different conditions?
Yep.
Thank you.
So the conditions that we have drafted, would you like me to read through them? I'm sorry. Sarah?
Unless the applicant has reviewed all of the conditions and they're acceptable to you.
Yes, I have, and they are.
Okay. We've got three votes. Can I have a motion to declare a lead agency?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Motion passes. Can I have a motion for negative declaration?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve special permit?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.